Okay, now we'll say it again. Welcome to the planning board meeting of August seventh, twenty twenty-three. And. Emily, could you raise your? Yes, I can. Uh, hello, everyone. This meeting will be held in a hybrid fashion with the opportunity for both in-person attendance and remote participation in accordance with House Bill number fifty-eight of the one hundred ninety-third General Court, which extended the governor's March twelfth, twenty twenty, orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, chapter thirty A, section twenty, until March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Please note that while an option for a remote attendance and or participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting hearing will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast, unless otherwise required by law. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific item on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. For purposes of in-person attendance, the town of Deerfield will host the meeting in the main meeting room of the Deerfield Municipal Offices with remote participation details noted below. All right. Thanks, Emily.
You're so welcome.
Okay, all right. Identified board members and attendants, Kathy Vitrova.
Kathy's here.
Emily Gaylord.
Emily Gaylord here.
Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester here.
Annalee Wolfco.
Annalee Wolfco here.
Andrea Leifson.
Andrea Leifson here.
Rachel Glenn Epsman and Denise Mose in prison. All right. Okay, let's see. I think since Rachel's not here, I don't think we have any minutes to review. Kathy, did you? Yeah, okay. All right, so we'll, we will work on that. And I think going forward, Amy will be doing a minute, so thank you, Amy. We appreciate that. All right, let's see. The next thing on the agenda is the clarification. I think there was some confusion with the street acceptance with Snowberry. I don't know if anyone hears of the Snowberry. But the motion is made by Kathy Vitrova. The planning board finds that Snowberry Circle and Graylock Lane located in the village of South Deerfield meet the requirements and standards for public roads as stated in Public Roads Bylaw, chapter one ninety-seven. And Andrew Leifson, you seconded that. And I think everyone voted with the exception of Annalee, who abstained. All right, so anybody who is here from Snowberry, that will then go to town meeting for a vote. Okay. Uh, the planner update. I know that that's been advertised. I think there are a few candidates, and that's all the information I have at this point about planner economic development. For a second. And as far as chapter one seventy-nine review update, Peggy asked if we could have a meeting August twenty-first at five-thirty for the planning board. If you're able to make it, it would be great to get a form. You don't have to decide right now, but if you could potentially put them in your calendar, we can check that with you later. All right, let's see. The next up is Next Amp. Solar. And let's see, Next Amp solar. Let's see, forty-two zero road here in continuation. Notice is here by giving that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, July tenth, twenty twenty-three, at six thirty PM on an application filed by Deerfield Renewables LLC for cycling review for property located forty-two zero road, assessor's map one ten lots twenty twenty-one to construct a two-point-nine-five-megawatt solar PV array on the existing Deerfield landfill, work to include minor minor upgrading additions to the existing gravel road, a better energy storage system, infrastructure to support utility, interconnection pursuant to zoning bylaws, chapter one seventy-nine, section three-eight-hundred, fifty-three-hundred, fifty-four-hundred, and chapter one fifty-five. The application documents available for review, and this was a continuation from my last public hearing. And I see that Mr. Barrett is here, Next Amp.
Yes, good evening. Hi, how are you? Uh, I'm joined by, uh, Nick from Weston Sampson, uh, sitting in place of Ralph Bukowski, who's out this week.
Great, thank you.
Yes, hi, everybody.
Okay. All right, so, um, I know this is a continuation. I know that we did, the planning board was able, a number of us were able to do the site visit with you and I believe Mr. Bukowski, and asked a number of questions, and he gave us a lot of answers. Okay, so is there anything else that you would like to present?
Yeah, just, uh, an update on the, uh, DEP front that has, today, we just got the post-closure news permit approval from DEP. Um, so that's all set on the, on the state side. Um, they've finished their, the review of the application and, um, have issued that approval.
Okay, and just, just to note that typically for a project of this size, we ask for a, uh, some a peer review, but DEP is the peer reviewer. So, okay, right, great, thanks. And, so, anything else to add? Or that's, that's all the news?
Yeah, I think that's about it, yeah.
Yeah, all right, all right. So this is a continuation of the public hearing. So, let's see, um. Anybody who'd like to speak is welcome to come up to the microphone, and we just ask that people be respectful, non-repetitive, two to three minutes. And, um, I will recognize the speakers as she comes forth.
I'll be timekeeper this evening. I can be timekeeper this evening.
Okay, that'd be good. And if you, and if you could please sign the sign-in sheet. Yeah, who knew, an address, please? Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh, first one I'd like to discuss, discuss, excuse me, one more, but it's a noise in the verder. The calculations and stuff by the CDC and by the other sources referenced down here gives you an idea what kind of noise we're going to be getting at thirty meters or ninety-eight feet. And that's going to be equivalent to what the coffee going there or TV audio go out from there, a hundred ninety-six feet. It's going to be about a vacuum cleaner. These are logarithmic calculations, so noise is not linear. So the verder noise, if you can see, you can get up to seven hundred meters, seven feet away, it's going to be like the width of toothbrush. That kind of decibels you hear up there. Then you can get all the way out to almost sixteen hundred feet, like the refrigerator humming from the verder. So that's, uh, that's one of the concerns is the noise, and as I proposed before at the last meeting, just ways of eliminating the noise and reducing it quite a bit, and that's by putting sound deadening walls around the verder. The proposal's on me. And on another issue, is the batteries. If the battery should catch fire, oh, oh, getting back to the noise again. There's a regulation covering the noise. And the regulation for covering the noise, the thing with the water environment is affecting themselves, and this says it shouldn't raise noise more than ten dB, ten dB above background, or seventy-some RDB at, uh, almost a hundred feet away, it's a lot more than ten dB above background, normal background for that area. If you go out there, you can see how quiet it is during the day. So, you know, going sixty dB above background, if the background probably is around ten dB around that area, maybe twenty dB max. So we're quite, we're quite, quite a bit more than ten dB, ten dB above background, but this is not how it works. This is, you know, from the National Institute of Health. And on the other issue, on the batteries.
We are at three minutes, so if you can just start to, um.
On the issue of the batteries, then going over, and on the issue of the batteries catching fires in the, uh, National Institute of Health, the batteries themselves are give off such gases as hydrogen chloride, which is a pretty deadly gas. So the question is, has that been viewed enough for the people who, you know, live, live near the sun? And like I said, my neighbor's ninety-six years old. She's not going to, she's not going to be able to leave the area.
Excuse me, Emily, did you say we're at three minutes? I apologize, but we're giving everybody equal time, so if anyone else, thank you so much. If anyone else would like to come to the microphone to speak? Just came for the entertainment. And if you could sign in, please, thank you.
Listen, this is what I've already addressed about the decibels and, you know, in the proposal, that it's like whispering the truth level. I think that's pretty, um, good marketing. Uh, a constant hum, if you consistently listen to it, starts to actually can cause health effects. But what mine also concern is, we're going to have construction. Now, we all moved to this area for decent profit. And we can sit outside, and we can relax, and enjoy the sounds of nature. And how long is this construction going to go on? How much is it, is it going to be your cause? And all the neighbors around it, what are we going to see from this? You know, yes, they're coming in, they're making money, you're making money off of these. We're all already paying huge bills to ever source for, just for distribution, and I see nothing in there on how this is going to help anyone in South Deerfield with their electric bills. Maybe the town gets some loose money, but we know that next time it's going to be the main ones making money, and ever source. So how is this with all of us living so close by, buying our properties? And when we go to sell our properties, if you can hear a humming noise, you've just dropped our properties by twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to get up and speak? All right, if there are no other comments at this point, what we do is we close the public hearing and then planning board deliberates. I move to close the public hearing. Do I hear?
Wait a second.
All right, so the public hearing is officially closed, and now it is time for deliberation.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Kathy Sylvester.
Uh, site plan visit. Okay, yeah, I believe Andrea, I think Rachel was on time.
There.
Okay, all right. Okay. Do you have any comments on the visit?
Well, I, uh, sorry, Emily Gaylord. Um, a few things that I think struck me. The first is that it's a brown field, and so there's very few uses for a piece of land like that, so it was compelling to me that this is a use for it. It's also in our master plan that we want to do sustainable building. This meets that mark. Um, the other thing that I was, um, excited by is that this power is staying local, and so, um, hearing that that's one of the concerns, and certainly, um, Next Amp can speak to that too, but often what can happen with solar arrays of this scale as they go in, the company is located, say, in like New Jersey, they're building the array, and they're taking all of the solar credits for themselves and their business elsewhere. The town would have a ability to participate in a community solar program with this, which would give the town access to that renewable energy. Um, so that was good, and, um, you know, it is at least for the town. I don't think, I mean, I think that we'll ask our, um, guests to speak to things like construction timeline and things like that. Um, but it does seem like noise is a really big question that people have. Um, I felt pretty secure in how, in the decibel levels based on our conversations, um, at the tour, but certainly I think that's something that we would want to make sure we're addressing. Um, the other concern that I've heard come up a few times is around fires. Um, I don't, I don't want to minimize anyone's feelings about that, but it seems like there's maybe been like one ever in solar arrays. Like it's not a common occurrence. It's not something that's, please don't quote me on that. Um, I actually know what the, um, uh, number is, but it's not a common occurrence, and so I would hate for us to turn down an opportunity for the town to invest in renewable energy in a way that takes advantage of land that's otherwise unusable to a benefit of the local economy um, because of something that I really don't think is an issue. Um, but I guess those were my key takeaways from the law.
All right, as you mentioned fire, which hopefully would never happen, but as far as I, as far as I know, uh, it's my understanding that if it was, it would be contained to one unit and would not spread, so it's not an issue. It's very unusual occurrence. Um, the other thing as far as the decibels, I think Mr. Mr. Bukowski actually had done, which, you know, I'm not sure, I mean, this is a lot of information right here, but Mr. Bukowski had information of the decibels. He went to various places and did check on the decibels. I know people sort of laughed at the rustling leaves, but, um, it's not that far removed from the rustling leaves or a whisper. Uh, excuse me, sir, but the, the public comment is over at this point. Okay.
Maybe along that line, Annalee Wolfco, um, this, um, chart that was just given to us. I need a reality check from my planning board, um, colleagues, because it kind of doesn't make sense to me. If the electric toothbrush is seven hundred and eighty, can be heard seven hundred and eighty-seven feet away, you divide that by three, that's two hundred and sixty-two yards, so that's two and a half football fields. And it's hard for me to understand, unless I'm doing something wrong here.
No, it's saying that it sounds like an electric toothbrush, seven hundred and maybe seven feet away.
Yeah, so, yeah. Oh, it's not, but an electric toothbrush could be.
Right, yeah.
That's why I need the reality check, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm like, no, it shouldn't be that.
A really industrial toothbrush.
Okay, so it sounds like an electric toothbrush seven hundred and eighty-seven feet away.
Okay. Okay.
This is Andrea, yeah. The inverter, it's my understanding, it will be five hundred feet from the nearest residence. And it is in an area of the landfill that is surrounded by trees, so there will be buffer of vegetation. It'll be five hundred feet from the nearest residence. Um, those are, seem to me to be compelling and helpful for sound muckling.
Well, that's true, and there's also a stand of arbor hody. I think a few of them are dead, but the arbor hody, and I'm not sure, I mean, this was in the front.
In the back, by the side.
No, it's in front, so I know that, that some of the issues were from residents across the street, it's.
Where is the, what's the five hundred feet? That's the neighborhood.
To the east.
The east, that's north.
And there's highway noise as well. But, right, isn't it on the side that's maybe not, highway noise?
Sir, once again, I'm, I'm sorry, but the public comment is, it's time is over. I, I know, and I have, I have to adhere to the rules in, of the planning board song, and I, I'm sorry.
Hi, this is Kathy Trevor. So I, I have a, a question, which is the date of this information from the air noise compliance is stated on page three. The material presented herein is intended for informational purposes only. Regulations continually evolve and are subject to change. We do not warranty this information and remind the user of this information to research the current invalidity and applicability. I don't have the date on this, although I don't know the members' current names. Um, that said, I, I know the area. I, I talked about this before. I lived up on the road. Uh, it is, it is a quiet area. Where I currently live, um, there has been considerable change very close to my home, change I was not, um, happy about initially. Um, it's like the public's concerns, noise, property value, quality of life, and, and the outside of your yard. Um, considerable growth, abutting the back of the property where I live, with minimal, quite honestly, minimal interference, given the development that has gone on. That is not to say you should oppose or accept something in the areas where you live, but it's just to give reference to, um, growth and change in the community. It, it is progress. To some and to others, it is important. Um, and, you know, the area is pretty bad, and the growth that is being sought to develop in the area in and of itself is silent. So the operation to keep that going, um, has the potential to distribute the sound. And, um, I, I can't say one way or another that how it will affect you. I do know that the anticipation I had for the effects of the growth behind my house are quite minimized to what the expectation I thought was going to be. And it's a lot of growth. It's a town garage. It's a fast business, and a new development is huge. Constantly developing. Um, a kind of growth, and I appreciate your feedback and your concern. Um, I, I had a question about the noise is not linear, and I wasn't entirely sure what, what that meant. Um, I think as much mitigation as possible is in consideration on the table for this project. Um, I, I, I guess my, my message is that there, there will be impacts within the community to families. And some impacts have greater intent and purpose than others. And to put a solar array in that is being managed by a reputable company that is producing power that is not damaging our planet, um, may be something we have to look at as part of our growth of our community.
Okay, and one question.
I just wanted to respond to the linear, then I think what is intended by that remark is that it's not like a point A to point B of sound. If there's like a tree here, that's going to impact the way the sound travels, right, a straight line. So meaning that any kind of interference will make it no longer linear. No, that's not what you mean?
Kathy? Once, excuse me, once again, sir, the public comment has, is, is over. I won't, okay, we're sorry. We're, we're deliberating, so.
Um, so what has been done for sound deadening, when you went on, because I wasn't able to attend that.
Okay.
There's a discussion about that.
We felt pretty confident after speaking with Mr. Bukowski and Mr. Barrett, and they gave us statistics on the decibel level that it is not going to be a nuisance. And, you know, we're deferring to experts as opposed to, although we appreciate this information, I don't know how old this is. These are experts. They, they're doing this every day. And as far as the comment about any kind of, um, money, I know that from the lease and from the taxes that will go to offset cost of energy for municipalities, and then also, I think someone else mentioned that Next Amp is offering. I currently, in our house, we currently do, um, have solar credits through another company. And, you know, it varies from month to month. Sometimes it's eleven dollars, sometimes it's fifty dollars, sometimes it's twenty dollars, but there is money that is coming back. So everyone in town will have the ability to sign up with Next Amp for the solar credit. Um, I think, I don't know if you're online, but I know I've been getting things online about that. So if it's better than what I'm getting, maybe I'll switch over. I don't know.
Kathy, now, this is Andrea. Now, I'll respond to Kathy. There is a, there are trees that go all the, this, this area is you know, sort of smack dab in the middle of where the landfill is going. Not on, not down on the edge. It's right in the middle. And there are trees buckling on all sides. While we were doing our tour, the one noise that we heard were lawn mores. There were a lot of lawn mores in this thing, but, um, we couldn't, we saw only one house from the, uh, from the site when we were tromping around. But, and it was quite far away. Couldn't even figure out which house it was. So the houses that are, would be adjacent, would have tree coverage.
And do we have an idea of how long the construction might take?
So, yeah, it'll be about three months for the, yeah.
And when do you anticipate starting the?
Depends on the weather.
Yeah, well, okay, but you can't count on the weather these days.
Um, but, you know, ideally, uh, we could start this fall. If not, then perhaps in the spring when things dry out.
Okay, so as far as construction is concerned, I mean, typically, when it gets chilly, I close my windows, so hopefully it won't be really loud. But with any construction, I mean, you know, what Kathy Trevor was saying is, is, you know, where she moved, I mean, where we moved, you know, thirty-two years ago. There were lots of woods on either side, and, and we were a little upset when houses were being built, but you know what? In the end, they're really nice houses, and I, I think if anything, they probably helped to increase our property value, so. Um, but, you know, as far as the solar array, I don't think, how high is it going to be within this area?
It'd be about nine feet is the, the tallest.
Okay, okay. So it won't be visible. I mean, the trees are surrounding it, so it's not going to be visible, so it's not going to be an eyesore, eyesore for any of the builders. Right.
Okay, that was, I think, also something important about the site visit is, one of the questions that we normally have is actually not about how many trees are staying, but how many trees are going, and it was very minimal, the amount of tree coverage that had to come down, if anything. It was mostly like bushes.
Sumac.
Yeah, and sumac, and, um, yeah, I think I took some photos, which I should have sent to Amy, um, of what's actually coming down, but it's, it's nothing. I'm, I'm glad that a lot of it's just been staying intact.
Yeah. All right, are there any more comments from the planning board?
I, I have one question. Do, we had, we, we did look again, as I said, at the trees, um, and we know that there's going to be a fence that is going to be around Yes. um, the whole area. Do we want to consider a condition of adding more shrubbery outside the fence? Then to dissipate well and absorb the sound?
Yeah, probably not. I mean, as far as, let's see, okay. When I spoke with our town attorney, because this is a municipal project, um, she said that the condition would be to comply with any and all performance and payment bond in accordance with state law. So that's number one, and number two, the removal bond, decommissioning assurance, and I believe that's already in the lease. Right. So she's, that was her recommendation for any kind of condition. So, which felt comfortable with.
And, well, I think we do have also general conditions that it is erected according to plans.
Yes.
There are any plans that change, yes, substantive, that you come back to the planning board.
Well, and the, the building inspector will be there. I don't know if Mr. Granada, if you have any, anything you'd like to add from Weston.
Yeah, yeah, hi. Um, with regards to the construction disturbance, um, there is no blasting going on. We're just putting stuff on top of the earth that's there now. Um, Um, uh, the cap, we're not disturbing the cap at all. So everything is not going to be large, heavy construction. That's with regards to the construction disturbance.
Okay, so you're essentially putting concrete pads, erecting a fence and placing the solar panels.
Yeah, correct. And underneath the concrete blocks will be stone.
Okay. Sounds like minimal disturbance.
Um, if you want to call it disturbance, yeah, we're just putting things on top of the earth as it is now. Um, we're not clearing anything, any large expansive spaces. Um, earthwork is very small. Um, earthworks with respect to the access road that we're going to be installing right next to where. The access is. Disturbance is extremely small.
All right, great. Thank you. And anything to add?
No, I just, and I would just say too that with, uh, the DEP permit, they have conditions, a list of conditions in there as well. Um, you know, including having somebody there on site at all times during construction to monitor and as a third party inspector. Then they'll issue month reports to the town and to DEP. Um, you know, just sort of saying what's going on, if there's any issues that we need to take or be aware of. Um, so DEP will have their eyes on this from, from day one. And, um, so they'll be there to kind of make sure everything goes according to plan.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I think they're pretty rigid.
Yes, yes.
And fast experience. All right.
Both there's nowhere to, I have one more question. Um, I guess if this is built and, and there is noise, is there anything you can do after that to mitigate that?
Yeah, so actually, as another one of the, the conditions for, from DEP is, is, um, to abide by their noise pollution policy. And so part of the condition before we start construction is to give DEP a scope of work to conduct the, the, a noise study. Um, so that will be a part of the conditions before we start construction. So that will, I think, give more clarity on, on any certain noise issues. Um, again, you know, like we were saying, you know, the, the, the closest house for the DBA and, and. This is the calculations from the equipment that we have on site as proposed and where the actual location of the equipment is going to be. Um, you know, that is less, that's about the same as. Um, it's actually below average, an average home noise inside of your house. And then the other houses across the road, um, is actually less, is significantly less than that. So. You know, picture your, your house sitting in your house, just sort of the ambient noise of your house. It's going to be significantly less than that.
So if we find that to be otherwise, what do we? Right, some. I was just saying, um, you know, I want to believe that, but I also want to protect residents.
Sure.
For being impacted. I'm sorry, I guess I don't really understand that if the noise is greater than expected and it's already built, what is the mitigation?
Well, then, then you can do things, um, well, I think we'll, we'll find out from doing that study before with, with DEP, kind of what sort of decibel levels.
If it's before it's built.
Yeah, and then, and then if there are any issues after post-construction, we can definitely take a look and. You know, there's things putting in more trees or some type of, of barriers around the, um, around the equipment. We can, we can definitely look into that.
Working to that.
Well, we can, you know, work with the town to come up with a solution to, to mitigate those, those concerns or issues.
Thank you.
And again, the town will continue to own the land.
Yes.
So if we decided on our land, that we wanted to plant trees, we can certainly always do that.
Who else? I, I don't, I don't think that would be up to the town. I think that would be Next Amp. Who would, I think, would probably be responsible for doing that.
But that would be a contingency if it's happening, just the noise of already matching what the DEP. Projects. And then if there's an issue, we'll come back to Next Amp and say this is meeting the standards we agreed on. Yeah.
Okay, so. Yeah, I don't know if this ties in specifically or correctly with conditions, but I wonder if one of our conditions could be that. If there are post-construction. Um, verified. Concerns about the noise level that the, um. That the operator will work with the town to mitigate this.
We, we can check, you know, I'm not sure about that. I, we can check the town council on that, but I, I think what covers it is that you're going to comply. With any and all performance and payment standards according to state law. And that includes with DEP. So if there are any issues, I mean, you know, prior to construction, we'll find out. If there are any issues after that, we'll find out and. You'll be fixing them.
And can you?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, and then, uh, as one of DEP's testing requirements as well is that. A, a year after the facility is in operation, they, the, the same, the third party inspector will do monthly inspections of the array. Uh, and then if there's no issues after one year, then we can petition to EP to reduce the frequency of those inspections. So even after it's operational, you know, DEP will still be monitoring and inspecting it.
Okay, so all of that is in the management plan that you'll be, okay, and sending to the town. So we'll be well aware. Of any issues.
Um, thank you. I was going to ask, um, especially since we do have some concerned residents here, if you could just speak to what happens at the DEP. Test and then what types of mitigations they might propose. So if they do the sound test and then they do find an issue. Could you just walk us through some of the things that might change at that point?
Yeah, I mean, you could, you could look at, um, you know, like I said, putting in a, a natural barrier of vegetation to help reduce any, any noise. Um, and then there are also, um, you know, sound barriers that you might be able to put in. One thing that we just have to be aware of is any sort of, any sort of, um, activity that doesn't interfere with the cap itself. So that's just one thing we have to keep in mind.
And for the vegetation mitigation rhymes a little. Um, would you, um, be planting like established trees or something? Because I could also. I would feel like that could take years.
Right. Yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, I mean, definitely could be something a little more substantial. Um, than what's out there along the, the new fence there of, you know, establishment or, you know, evergreens or, or some sort of.
Sure.
All right. Any comments? A motion?
Um, yeah, yes, I don't know how to, how to say it. Uh, the move that we proceed with. With Next Amp's. Contract to. Install a solar array. Um, the decommissioned land. The cat.
All right. Emily Gaylord second.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
Emily Gaylord second.
Thank you.
All right, so we have the conditions, which you already have and we will. Get them too. And so I guess it's just for a vote. Um, Kathy Vitrova.
Kathy Vitrova, yes.
Emily Gaylord.
Emily Gaylord, yes.
Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Emily Wilkow.
Emily Wilkow, yes. Angry Libsyn, yes.
And Denise Mason, yes. So this will. End the public hearing. And we hope to see that it's built in a. Built quickly, as silently as possible, and that we don't have any issues. And if there are issues, take care of them.
Sounds good. Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks for coming. All right. Thank you, Mr. Granada.
Yeah, you bet. I saw. Bye.
Excuse me? I'm sorry, I can't, I can't hear. Well, we did. This is the second public hearing. We had a public hearing last month.
Yeah.
And the, the only people that showed up is this gentleman and his wife. And, and all the materials are here on town hall and they're also online. Not this.
This is Massachusetts law, the planning or. Um, protocol goes.
No, it's Massachusetts law or, um, Massachusetts. This is, this is how, we have another public hearing after this, a bit similar to another public hearing. So what we do is we, um, all the butters are. Um, I think you probably sent a letter, okay? And to tell when the public hearing is and you're welcome to come and ask questions. And nobody did come to the first one of this gentleman doing his wife. And then we continued it because we did have a question. So we wanted to go, we wanted to go for site by other purposes to check everything out. Yeah, and but so that's really, that's how it works. I mean, that's. We don't have. Yeah, there are a hundred butters. All around. If within three, within a lot, no, within, within three hundred feet of that. So, yeah. So we send out there. I don't, um, I think our assessment. It will be, trust me, when, when. Well, no, I shouldn't say trust me, but no, seriously. Yeah, okay. Um, okay, we are, we're continuing the hearing right now. Okay, I mean. Okay. Okay, we're continuing the meeting. So, um, could you please? We're continuing the meeting. So if you guys can, you know, chat later, that would be great. Okay. Um, hey, Amy, is Bob on?
Um, he is having trouble. I just sent him the link. He was having trouble getting the website to work, so I'm hoping he will be tuning in shortly.
Okay, so.
Okay, I'm gonna send it. Okay, um, we're still working on this.
Please do get on my phone.
Uh, the problem is he can't seem to find the link, so I'm gonna send it to him via email.
It's the on the town website.
He ca, apparently he's having trouble with the town website. It's freezing on him. So just give me two seconds to. This. Come on.
Yeah. Okay. Well. I mean, there's not really much else. I mean, we've got four, but. If Bob isn't able to come on, Amy, I'm gonna move on to the next public hearing.
Okay.
We'll have to wait for that until the end.
Yep. For goodness sake. Here we go. Okay, well, I just sent him, uh.
Okay, well, Amy, I'm, I'm moving on.
Yep, okay, okay.
So hopefully he'll be on and we can, we can take care of that afterwards. All right. So. So we're gonna do the public hearing notices here by giving that the Deerfield Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, August seventh, twenty twenty-three at six thirty PM. On application filed by Florent, Inc. for site plan review for property located. At ten Greenfield Road, map one seventy-five, lot six, to operate a research and manufacturing facility pursuant to zoning bylaws. Chapter one seventy-nine. And if I could please ask everyone from the last hearing, if you could please exit or keep your voices down, I'd appreciate that. If you're listening. Okay. All right, is there anyone here from Florent? All right, come on down, please. Yes, oh yeah, please. Yes, I'm, I'm, yes. Yes, Amy, Amy, can the gentleman from Florent share the screen?
Uh, yes, you can. You should be able to just go up and share. Um, there's no. No restriction. So if you tune into the meeting through the website.
And if people in the audience want to see the screen, you're welcome. I know this is not a great setup. You're welcome to move your chairs around so you could see.
Ah, I think I see Bob. Here we go. Perfect timing. Okay, and I think Alex, I see you.
Well, okay, we were going to move on to Florent. How to? This is great. How long do you anticipate this? Would you guys mind if we carried on the A and R first? Or no, it'll, it'll only take a few, it shouldn't take very long. Okay, Mr. Walton? We're talking about the A and R on Hawks Road.
Yeah, could you put it up for me? I'm not, I don't quite remember it. I've been.
Okay, we, we all have copies of it. I know that one, one section is fifteen point nine four acres. And the other is nine point eight three acres and each one has more than ample frontage.
Yeah, the, the full lot across the road and they're basically separating it into two lots, one on each side of the road.
Yeah, I do, I do remember that. And I, I didn't remember, I don't think there's any problems with it, but I recall.
Yeah, I mean, I think at the time you said it was fine.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me though, but I don't recall anything, so.
Okay, and I think there's someone here from Hawks Road. Sharon, would you like to please come up to the mic? Sharon, would you like to please come up to the mic? You can slip, it's like the standing mic. You can scoot. Yeah, thanks.
My husband and I own the farm.
Okay, and you talk right into the mic. Okay, thanks.
And we had the land with hops in the barn and some land surveyed off to, for our daughter and her husband. And they intend to keep the land under chapter 61. Okay, so that's all that's happening.
All right, okay, thank you. So, Mr. Walton, did you see any issues with that?
I, I can't hear you very well either. Sorry. Having some major technical difficulty tonight.
You have technology at its finest. Now, it's my understanding that prior to tonight's meeting, that, that there were no issues with the separation of this land?
I, I can't really understand what you're saying.
You know, Denise, Denise, I can, I can, if you give me a minute, I can put the A and R up on the screen. So maybe Bob can see it. Hold on one sec.
Can Bob call in? Maybe that'll work on the phone better. Well, he can still call in and see it. So that he can hear us, you know.
Everybody here can see it.
Yeah, here we go. So it's up on my screen. I'm going to share my screen. Select tab, hold on. Okay, is that working?
No.
And let me just find out where that went. Here we go.
Now we can see it. Bob, can you see it? Amy, can you just call Bob on the phone and ask him if you can see this?
Yeah. I can see it now.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't think there's any issues with it, right? There's plenty of frontage.
Yeah.
Oh, I can't see anything.
Okay, I mean, you know, as far as I'm concerned, it seems pretty cut and dry. They're separating the land. There's enough frontage. I don't foresee a problem.
Yeah.
So, excuse me, Emily Wolfco, the new separation is along Hawks Road. Is that correct, Bob? Could you?
I, I just can't hear the people in the room. I can hear Amy fine, but I can't hear you.
Oh, how odd. So I'm sorry, Annalee, what were you asking?
Just verifying that the new separation is along Hawks Road.
Yes, I believe, so Annalee was asking if the separation is along Hawks Road. I believe it is. They are separating the, the lots across the road. So it was one lot that crossed the road and now we're separating it into a lot on either side of the road. Creating a new lot.
That's what it looks like to me. Yes, yeah. They don't have anybody there that can speak for it?
Um, yes, she already did.
Okay, I couldn't hear it. Sorry.
Yeah, no, that's okay. I, I, I think, I think we're all set with this.
Okay.
Um, I think it's pretty simple. The land is separated by Hawks Road. There's plenty of frontage. I think it's. Do I hear a motion?
Make motion to accept the A and R.
Right, well, here's second, second.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I, I can't see my screen yet. I stopped sharing. Who made the motion and who seconded?
Sir made motion. You seconded, and Andrew, you seconded.
And I am sorry, once again, who made it?
Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy, thank you.
Andrew seconded, okay.
Thank you.
Could you vote Kathy Vitroba? Kathy Kevi, Emily, Emily Gaylord, yes. Kathy Sylvester.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Emily Wolfco.
Emily Wolfco, yes.
Andrew Leibson.
Andrew Leibson, yes.
Denise Mason, yes. I think we're all set.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Amy. We're now going to move on to Florence. Patiently waiting. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right, so, so can you share your screen now?
Beautiful.
All right.
My name is Alex Nichols. I'm one of the co-founders and the chief engineer of Florence. I'm joined today by.
Hello, everyone. My name is Jose LaSalle. I'm the co-founder and CEO of Florence.
And today we'd like to tell you a little bit about our plan to operate a research facility at 10 Greenfield Road, one of the subdivisions there, that was formerly used as a warehouse space. Uh, we would also like to talk about the phase two manufacturing facility that we will potentially be building out after R and D is completed and we're ready for pilot manufacturing. Although we're not seeking a permit for that in Florida, so in Florida, we'll deal with this time. Just wanna check really quickly, is this timing overview okay for everyone? Should we, you know, potentially speed it up as we go 20 minutes?
But you can go as fast or slow as you need to.
Okay, thank you. So first off, I'd like to say, um, you have two of the founders here this evening. Uh, we can't, hit me, joined by Joe Hashu, our co-founder and CEO of CFO this evening. Um, we're actually all UMass alumni in the last 10 years. So we decided to start this company actually at UMass Amherst. We still have research space. And right now we're growing and it's, it's time to, to move out and look at something a little bit bigger. So to talk briefly about Florence's mission, why we started the company in the first place. And that's really to contribute to a greener world and to enable an energy transition. And how we do that is with an electrical energy storage device called a supercapacitor. A battery that is incredibly good at providing very high power. So about 100 times the power of a lithium ion battery you might find every sort of, for example. How we make a better supercapacitor? It starts with the active material. So in this, it's what's called activated carbon. I'll be happy to pass around a few pops of rock seedments. You can see in separate what we're accruing. But this activated carbon powder represents our core technical innovation that we want to scale up to make more energy efficient supercapacitors that themselves can be widely deployed for renewables fermenting. So that is pairing with lithium ion batteries that themselves supporting wind and solar energy to increase the lifespan of those batteries, to decrease safety concerns and to keep you set for the overall work of battery deployment. That's what supercapacitors are, are really good at. So you can see here, activated carbon, we'd like to end up that in South Deerfield, supercapacitor cells. Uh, we're actually, um, like we're going to contract manufacturers, but haven't decided we're going to manufacture the cells themselves. And then renewables fermenting, markets in the US and Europe. But, um, as you'll see in a second, we, we'd like to contribute domestically, first and foremost.
Alex, I may for one moment, if you can go back to that last slide, just to kind of bring this into the daily life. Activated carbon, if you're not familiar with it, if you have a filter at home, this is what is going into your filter for filtering out that carbon. And what we're doing is we're tailoring that, uh, the properties of that activated carbon for electrical energy storage. But I'll pass that to you.
So that is actually a great climber on activated carbon, which as Jose mentioned, is usually used in, you know, water filtration, both on an industrial scale as well as in your home. It's also about two kilograms of activated carbon in every internal combustion engine vehicle on the road. And a lot of that is made using either coal mined in the United States or coconut husk and shell. Uh, usually from the South Pacific or Indian Ocean. And our thesis is that there is a better way to mix activated carbon. Uh, and that is with waste hemp in this case. So that's actually what you see right here, just a quick little jar of wood chips. This material is a waste product of the hemp fiber industry. Uh, and if it's not left to rot in the field, it's usually used as soil stabilizer or animal bedding. And it usually rots anyway. What that means is that all of the carbon dioxide sequestered in this actually goes right back into the atmosphere. Our process helps to lock that carbon away in a mineral form in an energy storage device, while at the same time providing less embodied carbon to the entire process. So we're not shipping carbon all the way to the South Pacific here. Uh, we're getting our hemp. I mean, actually, there's people maybe use it badly. Um, so it's fairly common. And, uh, that's, um. A little background on, on Florence and what we're doing and what we have to build out in South Deerfield. I'll, I'll stop now and ask if there are any questions before I get into the more of the video for the permit phasing that we're gonna talk about.
So I was just, only because I was not really aware of supercapacitors, I was just, I came upon an article that was really cool. And so you're not the first to do hemp, use hemp for supercapacitors.
Exactly. So there, um, there's been a lot of academic interest in this field before. Uh, as far as we know, we're the first to try to commercialize it on a larger scale. But we're, uh, you know, standing on a shoulders of giants.
Okay, that's my understanding that, um, over in China, they're using coconut husks and have been doing so for quite a while and for public transportation, which is amazing.
Yeah.
So was that article that you read about the supercapacitor buses, perhaps?
It's called "Granch Out: Fighting for Climate Justice with Truth and Trees."
These sound horrible. That sounds great.
Yeah, I, I can give you the, yeah, find that. But yeah, I mean, I was just trying to acquaint myself with what a supercapacitor was. And, and it was, I just found it fascinating.
Well, uh, it, it looks about as humble as this, but, um, in this one factor, you can fit a lot of power. It can help test the lies of morals and values.
Hey, I, I have a question. So was this same concept, did people use corn husks too? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Kathy Vitroba. So, so did anybody ever use corn husks for this? Do you know?
Yeah, that's actually another, another area of academic interest in versus the past years. Corn husks have also been used.
I asked because there's a house on Eastern Ave that has a big, almost like a furnace. And that's what they use. That, that was the bio measure they use for heating and power in their home. It's pretty cool. And it was, the use was corn husks. So in real practice, in real time, and, and this was built at least probably 10 years ago. So, um, this is progress, right? This is how progress is made. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And just to add to your comment there. So when going from this one factor, the raw biomass to this one factor, we call a char. In the heat of that, actually, a lot of energy can be generated in this, the same way that energy is generated from waste biomass like corn husks that we can use to further department as, uh, any action processes at these games.
I'm sorry, it's not Vitroba again. So, so it can, so you use hemp. Does hemp, why hemp? Does it have a greater or lesser burn rate? Temperature? Does it create, um, a, a better, um, activated charcoal product?
So there are a few different reasons why hemp. But it, it really comes down to, versus the chemical makeup. It's actually very close to what you would find in pine wood, which is also some of the sweet pastures have been made out of in the past. Uh, second one is that hemp is very good at sequestering carbon. So you can get two, three hemp crops in a year in the American South. Um, and these, these are plants that are grown like 14 feet tall. So that's an incredible amount of biomass that, and all that represents sequestered carbon. We can help to block that away in a mineral form. And, uh, you're a good job with them.
So, so hemp, you can grow larger amounts, multiple crops in the course of a shorter amount of time, producing more activated car- carbon, producing more energy, or more energy storage.
It's also a very climate resilient solution compared to industry standard coconut, right? Single typhoon can wipe out a annual harvest, which has happened before. And brought a lot of concern to the supercapacitor community. And this is another way of creating resiliency and massive lighting.
What about water usage? Is it, does hemp require more or less water usage?
So hemp is a crop that actually survive on lands that are what's called semi-arable. So a lot of food crops actually can't grow on them. So to answer your question, uh, they are easily more water efficient than a lot of food crops.
And, and able to grow on land that maybe other things wouldn't be able to otherwise?
That's right. Any other questions? So I'd like to talk now about our proposed permit phasing, first as a research facility and then it all goes well as a manufacturing facility. So in terms of duration, we anticipate operating as a research laboratory for nine to 18 months after permit granting. Our current lease, the 10 Greenfield Road runs through a relative 26 to 3000s. Although if pilot manufacturing is going, going well, we'd certainly like to re-up on that lease and, and stay. When it comes to special permit considerations for this one, so taking a look at Deerfield Town Code, a research facility in and of itself acquires a special permit. In our case, that research facility would be able to meet all the standards set forth in section 4900 of the Town Code. However, code 4131 stipulates emissions of gas, cinders, dust, and electromagnetic radiation. So in our case, uh, the, the applicable factor there is for emissions of gas. Um, so our process, when converting this biomass into activated carbon, uh, it does emit carbon dioxide. So, um, on a, on a research facility basis, this is around two kilograms of CO2 per hour of operation, to be for non-continuous operation. So between six to 10 hours per day, most likely. Uh, to, to give you a sense of how much CO2 that is, that's about as much as your car would emit. Uh to to give you a sense of how much CO2 that is, that's about as much as your car would emit driving uh between two, three miles on the highway. Taking a look ahead to the manufacturing facility, um we would increase our CO2 output about tenfold and that would be on a continuous basis. As you can see here, we'd be operating twenty four seven. Um in this case, we would have less than a thousand kilograms of of chemical inputs to our process. Um but more than a hundred, so we're not the um what is uh designated by the Massachusetts Department of Environmental Protection as is a very small quantity generator, and they're a small quantity generator in this case. And then finally, um the last part of the consideration for the special permits is hazardous waste. We're generating less than a hundred kilograms of hazardous waste a month uh for the manufacturing facility. Um just want to make a a quick note here about carbon dioxide emissions. Um that even within carbon dioxide, we're actually able to sequester more CO2 in a longer lived form as opposed to leaving it out in the field, uh which would just turn all of our carbon basically back into CO2. So microbiotic competition.
Okay, can you say, this is Andrea, um can you say where the hazardous waste will be disposed at? How it will be disposed?
Absolutely, yeah. So the Mass D E P delegates has map service providers in Massachusetts. Uh the nearest one is in West Brookfield, um and we'll most likely contract with them to remove our hazardous waste.
Um we'll open up to public comment a little bit, yeah. So um I'm just curious, what hazardous waste? I mean, you're you're burning the hemp and what's what's the hazardous byproduct?
So in this case, the hazardous byproduct would be salt brines. So not something that you would want to dump down the drain, um something that you would want to dispose of properly. Um there was also, these brines would actually have um some decomposition byproducts uh from the carbon in them as well. Uh we would also want some waste of this.
Okay. And just to let the planning board know that um that Florence does need to go before the the zoning board of appeals and we'll be doing that on Thursday. And that's where chapter forty nine hundred comes into play because it's manufacturing, that's what they're covering. So really what we're looking tonight is really seeking relief from code um forty one thirty one for the research in phase one. So, okay, so for the research in phase, this is research, and then if you deem that it's it's going well, then you go into phase two, so then you come back to us for phase two, is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And just to clarify, the gas emissions, that's the emissions from the work itself. It does not encapsulate the carbon offsets by doing this work, right?
That's correct.
Okay, so what, okay, well, I have other questions. Um I'm sorry, I have just one question. So you said you would most likely contract with this company East. What if you most likely didn't? Who would you contract with? I mean, I guess that's my question. Obviously, you'll have to contract with somebody. So if that's the primary contractor, then if it weren't them, I mean, most likely because you're in phasing of making determinations this way, most likely? Or is there another method to, or somebody to contract with?
Yeah, for for whatever reason, contracting with specific firms isn't without, there are also firms uh in its field as well as Worcester, uh there's certainly other way there. Um but there, yeah, there are a couple of different folks that we've been contracted with, uh let's say, as I have an example.
Okay.
Right, so I think what would be really interesting to hear from you, not just for us, but also for the Z B A. What's the real advantage? It's replace lithium batteries and it has various applications other than just for electric vehicles. So could you talk to that a little bit more?
Absolutely. So this technology um in in some limited applications could replace lithium ion batteries. However, it's, it mostly acts to supplement lithium ion batteries, make lithium ion batteries safer, longer lived, and more cost effective. Um so a lot of applications like wind or solar, uh where you would see intermittent and variable power generation. That puts an incredible load on lithium ion batteries and can cause what's called electrochemical shock. Interesting follow on my our previous um uh application uh that that you heard, but that electrochemical shock can cause safety concerns down the line. Uh so what's your best professors can do is they can sit in front of lithium ion batteries and insulate them from high power events that might cause safety concerns. And that actually is something that forms a hybrid energy storage system, is what it's called. Uh which is a technology that is widely applicable to really anywhere lithium ion batteries are used for medium to long term energy storage. Uh so that also occurs at commercial industrial sites, demand response reduction. We are actually talking right now to EV charging companies um that are interested in loading their demand response. Um as well as electrifying buildings going off, gas going on electricity, decreasing their uh their demand response.
So this is Andrea, will you have to do much um rearranging construction or anything of the of the site that you are leasing?
This is actually a perfect segue into some next slides that I'd like to show. And they're my comments.
Yep, thanks.
So this is the phase one research laboratory layout. Um now, I I believe uh you have potentially copies of this document um on number thirty six. Uh I know this is quite small on this screen, um so happy to to zoom in here. Um so this was a uh two five hundred square foot um subdivision that was used for warehousing before the new gym. And that uh because of that, it has inherited the same uh I B C designation of F one for industrial and manufacturing as the entire complex. Uh but currently, it's not built out for occupancy. So the biggest change that we're going to be making to this space is air handling, um making the H vac system available for occupancy, the levels that we're going to be using for. Other than that, you can uh kind of see we have uh not the black and white, but all of the colors on here are uh are in difference. This is uh equipment and shelving. This part, so if we take a closer look at the upper right corner here, this is the main part of our research and development facility. Uh so we have some two furnaces right here. This is the main, um we'll be doing pyrolysis, so turning hemp biomass into activated carbon. These are in the ventilation hood with a pregnant sprinkler hood system. We also have additional team hoods um for research, somewhat what you might find in a bio laboratory. Uh we're not doing anything with biologics. Uh and then some simple benches as well as uh just having.
And once again, just to remind the planning board that this is a change of use, so, I mean, yeah, we certainly ask questions about what's happening inside, which is really interesting. But again, I think these zoning, these zoning boards will a lot of questions as well. Just one, okay.
Just to to round out the uh less interesting supporting aspects of the facility. So here we have a drench shower and eyewash station, um to a standard for a research facility. Uh generalized inventory storage, uh dry phase storage. Um so we'll mostly be storing potassium nitrate side here, which is a chemical often used in soap manufacturing, for example. And then there's a satellite accumulation area, which from an environmental health and safety perspective, is where hazardous waste comes. Finally, you can see in our upper left corner of the facility, uh biomass storage. So um separated from everything else here. And then in the lower right hand facility, private facility, um supported from the drench shower and eyewash station. Uh we're just co-locating it with the tempered water drink. Uh all the slides that I have to show, sorry, sorry.
It's really a bit extra. No, this is really, really interesting project on, you know, the town last year. We want to be net as a girl by, is it twenty two? That may be a little ambitious, but it was by twenty fifty, so we are doing a lot of things in time. Um, okay, so I'm going to open it up to public comment. And if you please, if you want to make a comment, come on up to the microphone and if you could just um use your name and your address, that would be great, thanks.
Hi, did that sound okay? And can you speak, get really close to the voice? I'm Sarah, I'm in the fourteen South Main Street, so across the railroad tracks behind the building. Um I just, I'm not sure if these are questions that are more appropriate for tonight or for Thursday. I also ask one, um I guess I was hoping first to hear again, can you just repeat what you said about the CO2? You said at first it would be minimal and then you talked about how it would increase a lot and I didn't get what you said about that specifically or how much that was.
Can I respond?
Um, yeah.
All right, so the CO2 would increase about tenfold, so um at at this point, twenty kilograms an hour is actually about as much CO2 as your car would emit on an hour long commute.
Okay, and so did you already say, like, when you're emitting it, it's just going, like, you have a ventilation system and then it's just going out somewhere?
That's right, we use a stack system.
And then you said it would be operated in twenty four seven or that was only if you went to the manufacturing?
That's only on the private manufacturing basis.
Okay. And so again, if it if it gets to that point, we'd be having another meeting and talking about changes that were made for that.
Right, and as and as far as that that part, that's under the zoning board appeals, they make that decision.
Okay, and I think I probably don't have more questions right now, except I guess for the research phase, like, how big of an operation are you? And like, I don't really know from this map and maybe there's somewhere else that I can look at, like, what streets, where, like, which part of the building you're in.
I I believe they're in the back of the building facing the train track. Correct?
Right back.
To speak to for the research phase, like, how, what are the hours for that and how many people? And are there trucks going back and forth for that or is it just people showing up for work in their cars?
So we do expect to receive uh very intermittent deliveries as we set up the research facility. Uh that should be done uh in about a month or two. Um the the main course of the the research facility's operation, we would be operating in the hours of six AM and nine PM. Um so as per the Deerfield Town Code, I believe it's in section forty nine hundred. Uh and we would have no more than five folks on site at any different time. Uh we've spoken with the landlord and that shouldn't overburden the whole. This will be uh entirely uh engineers and and research scientists of one.
Okay, and I just, um I have to mention that uh three minutes are up for the public comment.
Okay, thanks, Amy. Okay, do we have others? Anybody else in the audience wants to comment? No? Okay. All right, um so if there's no other, if there's no other public comment, I'll close the public hearing and be willing to review and ask any additional questions. So this is, I'm sorry, this is Andrea. You can see on this diagram that you sent us, we're at five and ten, but we don't know on the top of the um the diagram what the roads are and uh there are budding homes. Okay, and I'm sorry, Andrea, I I just needed to remind the planning board, which we forget, that once a public hearing is closed and we don't ask, we can't, or we don't ask. Okay. But we just deliberate among ourselves.
I don't know what street.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Wait, yeah. Yeah. We know these pesky rules and regulations.
Okay, if if there's any deliberation happening right now, I can't hear anything.
No, Emily's showing Andrea a map on her laptop.
So, thank you.
Yeah, just to get a little clarity on the location.
Okay.
All right.
Yes, Emily Wilco, um I noted in the uh in the executive summary that they talked about, um the two furnaces, I believe it is, at nine hundred, nine hundred degrees Fahrenheit. I did see that we didn't have any response from our fire inspectors, however, I certainly did not have better assurances about, you know, that that all was okay with our fire department.
Well, what I would do is put a condition that um as long as there's no objection from our fire department, that it's fine. I mean, they would, they would be the ones who would object.
And then potentially some modifications could be made to the plans, so it's in compliance with the fire chief.
Right, right, compliance with fire chief and there are also other regulations that you have to go by.
That would give me assurances, thank you.
Okay. Other comments, continuing? And I I just, you know, personally, I I think it's, I think it's really interesting and, you know, we're trying to get away from fossil fuels and be a little more uh thoughtful in what we use and I I mean, I just, I just found it really fascinating that there are so many different uses for this. And, you know, I like the idea that it's staying local that you get hemp from here in the United States as opposed to having to ship things. We don't grow coconuts here. Coconut fiber from wherever it comes from. So I think that, you know, that's definitely a real plus.
I mean, very scientifically, I think this is so cool. It's just so cool. I mean, I think what maybe one of the things, um and I I know we can't ask you questions at this point, but maybe you can like nod at me if I'm right about this. Um, but with peak load, what could happen is in a lot of towns on the municipal level are trying to figure this out is when we all turn our air conditioning on, for example, in the hottest moment of the day, our grid can't handle that. And so what ends up happening is all of these like retired coal firing plants have to flip on for like those few hours, almost undoing all of the work we've been pushing for in terms of renovacy and getting nods, um, energy. And so one of the big question marks in transitioning our grid has been storage. And so this seems like a potential answer to storage and making those peak load moments not happen, which undoes the work of, you know, a lot of people are doing to try and get us to those 2030 and 2050 goals. And it sounds like, thank you. Um, it's not even just that it could be shipped locally in the U.S. I mean, this is an opportunity for local economic stimulus. So in terms of checking a few of our master foot and boxers, I think that says it.
Can I ask for clarification on something?
Yes.
I mean, I, I, I agree with Emily, who's Kathy Wetruba. I do think we need to take into consideration a butter's, um, the combustible aspect of the product or byproduct. The emissions, um, the fire department will give some great clarity on that, really necessary key. It is very close to residential homes. And I would just like some assurance that the emission and the operation, uh, remains safe for the individual that lives so closely connected to this.
I'm assuming that we're going to be addressing that in phase two, not in phase one. So when they come back to us, I think those are really good questions to ask. And, you know, it'll be interesting. I think, you know, it might, it might be good for any or all of us to participate, you know, just listen in on the ZBA meeting on Thursday. So. What does that mean? I don't know. I have to look online. It's probably, probably six o'clock.
6:30.
6:30. Thank you. Looks like they're joining us. Okay. Um, yeah, you know, this is sort of, yeah, it's, it's, it's sort of a joint decision here. You know, moving, saying that we, whether we wanted to move on, you know, phase one and any kind of conditions. And so the condition, once again, the fire department was alerted to this. They have not gotten back to us whether they saw it or not, but that would be one of the conditions to make sure that they're okay with that. So I'll speak with Amy and we'll check with the fire chief again to see. And as far as the waiver for chapter 179, um, section 4131, that's, you know, that's, um, that's the decision.
That would have to do with the, what is it? Uh, the CO2 emissions that were, what, two, two miles, two miles, was it?
Well, the beginning, Thursday.
Yeah, phase one.
It's basically containing anything on site. And so it's, I mean, to face one, it's intermittent, um, intermittent CO2 can, CO2 emissions comparable to driving a car two miles. I mean, it depends.
In what amount of time?
Uh, they, I think they said in six to eight hours.
So 50 hours per week emissions is the sequence was my clarifying question, by the way, so I can ask. So if it, if there are emissions that equals six to 10 hours per week, that six to 10 hours is the equivalent of a two mile car drive.
No, it's more, it's more. So, I mean, you know, our cars are admitting that when, so it's 20 hours, when we're exhaling, we're exhaling CO2. Yeah.
And just to, I mean, maybe clarify, I think we're asking for people listening, not, normally when we hear something like this, we don't have any glimmer of what phase two really necessarily looks like. Today we're just weighing in on phase one. We happen to have an indication of where it's headed, but today we're just deliberating on what's happening right now because this whole process will have to happen. I guess. Okay. And also regarding, whenever we talk about carbon and it, we've talked about it twice today. So I feel like the trend is going to be, we're going to be talking about this a lot more. Whenever we have a project that has carbon offsets, I think that has to be part of the discussion as well. Because if we only looked at this as the carbon being produced by the work and not the amount of carbon that's being reduced because of it, I think that's a narrow view to look at a project like this. And something I think we definitely will want as a planning board to start to wrap our heads around because we can't just look at it that way. It's almost like, it's a thing about as an investment of the dollars we're investing by the carbon offset.
Well, that was another question I had too. So what is the turnaround emissions versus usage rate? Like where, where, where the offset.
Right. I think, I think that will also come up in phase two. I mean, I was sort of thinking, you know, like, but I was, you know, it's many papers. I was thinking ahead about this in phase two and I was going to potentially ask in phase two, can you quantify how much carbon from the biomass that will offset the amount emitted during the research and then manufacturing process? So that would be a question that I would ask in phase two. So. What follow up? Thank you. That's all I think. Yes. Yeah. So, um, okay. So I think for condition, I mean, does everyone agree with that condition as long as there's no objection from the fire department? And do I hear a motion for a waiver for chapter 179, section 4131? And if you want me to read.
I saw one.
You will? Okay.
And that, but if you want to read 4131.
I'll read 4131. I memorize that. Okay. So that comes under establishing a districts. It's all cinders, dust, fumes, gases and electromagnetic interference shall be effectively confined to the product premises. So at this point, phase one, it's a little CO2 that's going to be admitted. And again, it has to go before the CBA on Thursday. And when there should be a lot more information by the time you go into phase two, so we will have many more questions. I'm sure. Okay.
So is one of our conditions that it passes, will it be?
No, that's not, I can't, I don't think that it does. You made a motion on the waiver?
Yes, that we, um, accept the waiver request of, of chapter, uh, section, uh, 4131 of ours on the bios.
All right. So you were second?
I'm second. Kathy Sylvester.
Okay. So put it to vote. Kathy, yes. Emily, yes.
Kathy Sylvester, yes. Emily Wilkow, yes. Andrea Leeson, yes.
Denise Mason, yes. So it looks like we're good to go and we'll, I know I'll see you on Zoom on, uh, the ZBA on Thursday. And I'm sure a few other people might be there too. And that is here in person. You'll be here in person. Okay. All right.
Thank you so much.
Well, oh, thank you. We, I, I just, do you have to say you did, okay, you did close the public hearing? Yes, right. Yes. Uh, we close the public hearing. Do I hear a vote? Close the public hearing. Kathy, yes. Emily, yes.
Kathy Sylvester, yes. Emily Wilkow, yes.
Andrea Leeson, yes. Denise Mason, yes. Public hearing is closed. Thank you so much. Okay. You know what? Hey, Amy.
Uh huh.
We're going to, which I did not do before, but we are officially closing the public hearing on next AMP as well.
Okay.
Great.
Do we vote Kathy DeProva? Yes. Emily, yes.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Emily Wilkow, yes. Andrea Leeson, yes. Denise Mason, yes. Okay. We're all official.
Um, can I just ask who, who made the motion and who seconded?
Who made the motion?
I, I, no. Uh, we can play Emily.
Oh, I did. I moved, well, I moved, uh, for the, um, waiver. I moved the waiver that there are, for the one year request.
Which motion?
Yeah, which one you're talking about, Amy?
I'm, I'm talking about, uh, who is moving to close, um, uh, next AMP.
Emily Ward moved to close, so.
I'm, I'm sorry. Who was that again?
Emily Gaylord.
Thank you. And who is second?
Kathy Wetruba.
Thank you.
All right. So I think we're all, we're all set with that or we'll just have a few more items. Okay. All right. Is there any other business not reasonably anticipated? No. Okay. Any reports from committees?
Uh, well, uh, the CPC voted to return the money, take it down for the money that was voted for the park, but it's not happening.
Yeah.
We had to just wait quickly to return that money.
Okay. Okay. Any other, any other, open space committee did meet. We are just continuing our discussion, um, especially around town owned.
I, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt. Which committee?
Open space and recreation.
Thank you.
Um, one of our concerns, and we are continuing to, to discuss town owned property that is not permanently restricted. So we have been doing some research about that. All right. And let's see, do I have anything, um, CCI? We have changed our meeting. We'll be meeting September 12th. And September 12th to go over anybody who's not able to attend the VHB presentation for our complete neighborhoods. And they've come up with a couple of different scenarios of placement of different things, specific, more specifically senior housing on our town campus. And so we will be, uh, just going over that briefly. And then on September 14th, VHB will be doing a presentation here, a public meeting on some suggestions. And we'll welcome anybody, you know, townspeople to attend, um, to talk about that. And, thanks. Yes. I can't think of anything else. Any other? So.
I guess I mentioned for MVP, although my facts are incorrect, but, uh, MVP did submit, uh, some grant requests. And we got like, a couple, like, what you know, response, yeah, for grants. You got a couple, a couple million. For, um, energy efficient stuff. Yes. How's that for like a tease?
Wow.
But it was, um, I have to give kudos to certainly the Chris Curtis, but then a lot of people who works with Chris, um, a lot of, um, under the wire, um, writings for the grant and we got them.
That's great. You know, next time I'd like to hear more, or if you could find out more specific information on.
I'll, I'll follow up.
But that's really exciting.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
All right. On that note, I just, if you could, um, please get back to Amy since we're not supposed to talk to each other about meeting on the 21st, August 21st. It's a Monday night. That would be with Peggy to do the final draft of chapter 179.
Okay. And so you said August 21st. Check those calendars now.
I'm sorry. Can we check our calendars now?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. I, I, this is Kathy Sylvester. I can do it, Amy. I just. Yeah, I'm, well, we're all on Zoom.
We're all on Zoom.
I'm on call, but make, but, oh, yes.
Amy, this is Emily Gaylord. That's also fine for me.
And this is Andrea. I think it's fine for me. And it's fine, it's fine for me, Denise. Kathy Wetruba, I think it's fine for me too.
Oh, I can't.
Okay, that's amazing. Okay. And we'll check with Rachel, but at least we'll have a quorum. So I will send, I'll send that out separately. I just wanted to sort of take the pulse of the planning board community to see if we would be able to have that meeting. So that's great. So we'll have that meeting and then we'll be able to wrap it up. Then we'll have a, just a public discussion before town meeting, I think. It was special, special town meeting. As far as I know right now, it's October 23rd at seven o'clock at Frontier. That's all, that's what I know now. I don't know if that's, you know, pretty sure. Okay. So if there is no other business, do I hear a motion?
I moved to close the meeting.
Emily, I'm second.
Okay, Emily, and then Annalise seconded. So meeting is adjourned. Um, we do need to vote on that. Kathy Wetruba.
Kathy Wetruba, yes.
Emily.
Emily Gaylord, yes.
Kathy Sylvester, yes.
Emily Wilkow, yes.
Andrea Leeson, yes.
Denise Mason, yes. So meeting is ended. Thank you, Amy.